Hello, everyone. Welcome to the December meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits. For consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have seven members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call Mario DeFolvio, Joseph D'Angelo, Chris Judgeeats. Thank you. Kelly Weiss.
Present.
Manny Priest. And Steve Cipresson. All right, there's seven and can proceed. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So we have November minutes. On base camp, anybody see anything? Problems with the November minutes? All right, Mario is saying.
Yeah, you were.
We can review that and make the change.
Steve, you didn't recuse yourself, right? You just said what we're gonna say. Okay, all right, so. All right, any other? Any other comments about the notes, meeting minutes? All right, anybody want to make a motion to approve? All right, motion by Chris, second by Steve, all in favor? All right, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Of approving with the change to Mario's extension.
I think we just determined that no changes were needed, yeah. All right, next item on our agenda will be public hearings and final deliberations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, we will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we are reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project. To remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicant's team that is planning to speak for our public record. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. For anyone unfamiliar with the format of a public hearing, we will be opening the microphone to solicit public comment about a specific project that's up for review tonight. Public comments should be directed towards members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicant directly. It is not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with the applicant during the meeting. The commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public comment portion of the meeting. When there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. The commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to our review. It will again not be acceptable for any member of the public to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicant while they respond to questions or comments that arose during the public hearing. All right, so tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant AOW Construction. Project address is 439 Court Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business in an existing commercial building in the C1 Service Commercial District. Welcome back.
Hi, can everybody hear me? Okay, great. My name is Al Bergazoli with AOW Construction, address is 30 Essex Street, Albany, New York. We are here to present the retail cannabis, potential retail cannabis location at 439 Court Street. As previously stated, this is reusing an existing building. No site modifications are included. It's basically just a gut of the interior space. Renovation into a sales floor, some bathrooms, the storage vault, back of house and delivery areas. We've previously seen the finishes, you know, fairly modern, new finishes throughout. Really, for the project itself, we've talked about the fact that there will be security guard onsite, there's a secured entrance, there's a security system throughout the whole place, monitoring cameras and all of that. I'd like to get into, you know, some of the specific items that were brought up at last month's planning board meeting. So we could address them. I circulated an email earlier last week. Hopefully, you guys had a chance to, you know, review that, but I'd like to enter that, you know, into the record here. So there was some concern regarding the privacy fence between 439 Court Street and the neighboring properties. There is an existing eight-foot-high solid wood fence on the north side of the property that provides privacy between 439 Court Street and adjacent properties on Riverside and Bigelow Streets. Eight-foot-high privacy fence solid is a little bit above and beyond what you would normally see. You know, as a fence between neighboring properties, six-feet solid high fence is typical. This one, you know, goes above and beyond the six-foot normal requirement. There was an issue regarding sight lighting. The sight lighting in this space apparently had been an issue when the initial ANW was built and it was addressed at that time. The sight lights throughout this entire place are 12 feet high as opposed to the neighboring 16-foot and 20-foot-high sight lights at a Taco Bell or Burger King. 12-foot-high lights are pretty low when it comes to sight lighting for a parking lot. So that the diffusing of the light is really directed directly into the parking lot and there's very little, if any, light bleed into the neighboring properties. There was a concern regarding stone versus grass along Riverside Drive and along the north side of the property in the drive-through lane. The landlord has agreed contingent upon approval to remove the stone and replace that with seating or sod. There was also a concern about the landscaping and the fact that there's some trees and shrubbery should be planted. Landlord also agrees contingent upon approval that they will install the trees and the shrubbery that was originally shown on the landscaping plan, C5 dated 3/31/2015. Hours of operation. We've reviewed the hours of operation and have, I believe, all come to, you know, some agreement here that the hours will be limited similar to what you have at your other locations, you know, other cannabis locations in the city. Monday through Thursday, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I'd like to note that these hours are considerably less than the adjacent businesses. You know, Taco Bell runs Sunday to Wednesday, 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Thursday and through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM. Burger King runs all week, 6:00 AM to midnight. So as you can see, you know, these hours are considerably less. Another concern that was raised was the sight lines to the Calvin Coolidge School. Last month, I couldn't answer to this properly. I now can. There are no sight lines directly from Calvin Coolidge School to this location. It is impossible to stand at Calvin Coolidge School and see this location. There's houses in the way, there's fencing in the way, and it's over 1,400 feet from the school. Per the Cannabis Management Guidelines, retail dispensary or delivery-only location cannot be on the same road and within 500 feet of a school grounds. That's defined by Section 409-2 of the New York State Education Law. This location is nearly three times farther than the law requires. We discussed queuing for the drive-through. Submitted a drawing, brought it with me here as well. As you can see, the drive-through will allow eight to nine cars of queuing with very little impact to the parking lot. Obviously, more cars can queue into here as well with some impact to the parking lot. The intention of the drive-through is to service pre-orders. So the amount of time that a vehicle is in the drive-through lane will be minimized. It'll actually, the drive-through lane will assist in the parking lot usage and, you know, potential overflow of parking. Security cameras. So I did not submit this drawing because we do not like to submit security drawings into record where they're available for public review. Security is, you know, paramount at these locations. I'd like to have an opportunity to review with you. This drawing is not ideal. Forgive me, we're not really a marketing company, we're, you know, a construction company. But I've done my best here to give you an outline. So in the middle here is the building hatched out in black. At all the corners, there will be a security camera that has 360-degree capability. As you can see, you know, facing Court Street and Riverside, the cameras will be covering all the parking lot, all the sidewalk, out into the road and everything in front of the building. Same thing in the back, there'll be security cameras on the back of the building that will cover the drive-through lane and all the way around. Will not be into, you know, encroaching into neighboring properties because of the eight-foot-high fence. So I believe that's all I have from the last meeting. Do we have any questions before I conclude?
My question would be on security cameras. Would the applicant be amenable to installing security cameras on the western end of the property since the parking lot goes all the way to Bigelow Street? It probably would be good to have.
Oh, you're saying to provide a camera, you know, somewhere out here, monitoring this section of the parking lot?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that could be, that could be achieved. You know, one more additional camera, you know, out here on a post facing out this way will provide that ring of coverage that you're looking for. Yes, that could be attained. So if that's it for me, I would just like to conclude with, you know, this is, as we stated before, a legal business in the state of New York. It's a legal business in the City of Binghamton that the City of Binghamton has opted into and has come up with zoning. I don't believe that happens in this room. I believe you have a zoning, separate zoning department that has created the zoning for your cannabis dispensaries. This location is within your zoned cannabis areas. It's actually zoned for retail distribution and zoned for consumption onsite. We are not looking for consumption onsite. We're requesting retail sales only. And we hope that you guys will approve this as it is zoned properly and it is in your cannabis district. Thank you.
All right. All right, well. Since new information has been presented tonight, we'll reopen the public hearing for the project. It was noticed, I talked to Tito before this, it was, signs were put up and it was noticed that the public hearing would be reopened tonight. So this is a reopening of the public hearing for the applicant AOW Construction. Project address is 439 Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a cannabis retail business in an existing commercial building in the C1 Service Commercial District. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project tonight, please come to the microphone.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm a little more prepared this time than last time.
All right, try and get right up into the microphone. It's pretty sensitive, so.
Okay, can you hear me? Is that okay?
Can everyone?
Is that okay?
That seems.
I use my coaching voice, but I don't think you want me to do that. My name is Susan Papastat. I live on the east side of Binghamton. I've been a insider my entire life. I love it on the east side. It's always been home. I'm just gonna read right from here. I went home after the last meeting, got right on my laptop. Okay, I wasn't impressed. As I attended the November 7th Board Meeting where this item was tabled for today. At the last board meeting, I'm sure you remember, there were several residents that protested the start of a cannabis business in this area for many reasons. One of the main reasons was interest of the children of the neighborhoods. Since Calvin Coolidge Elementary School is in sight from the corner, not from the site, but from the corner of the business, it does not seem appropriate to have a cannabis store at this location. The fact that there is a drive-through makes it even worse. You can drive through McDonald's, get your kid a Happy Meal, and then come through and get yourself a Happy Meal. Let it be known that I'm not against the legal site of the cannabis in New York State. I'm not a huge fan because I truly believe that cannabis can lead to other more harmful narcotics. But I'm not against the legal sale of it. I just don't believe it should be sold legally in a somewhat residential neighborhood where there is an elementary school visible and a park just a few blocks away. Pick another location, the Rocket Plaza. There's tons of adult situation entertainment in the Rocket Plaza and there's a vacancy. The Binghamton Plaza, we all know that that has a lot of vacancies. But in that area at the ANW, I don't think it's a good site. I'm also very concerned about the traffic issues the business will cause. With the presence of Taco Bell on the corner of Bigelow Street and Court Street, the traffic is already extremely busy during lunchtime and after dinnertime and after any time there's like an event, baseball game, hockey game, coming home from the bar at two or three o'clock in the morning. There are weekly occurrences where residents cannot drive up Bigelow Street to their homes because of the bottleneck traffic from the drive-through at Taco Bell. Is the exit from the drive-through of the cannabis gonna be on Bigelow Street? Because that could be a very big concern. At the November Board Meeting, the chairman stated he appreciated the residents' comments and concerns, but we knew the area was labeled "commercial" when we moved into our homes. And that is somewhat of a correct statement, but not completely true. When I moved there over 20 years ago at that Bigelow location, there were residences at the bottom of Court Street. But because of the 2006 and the 2011 flood, those homes were demolished. So now the question is, and the other business that was there was Parisi's Twin Fries, where coaches brought their teams to celebrate when they had a victory. Now they bring them to Burger King or McDonald's. So again, children are in that area, young children. The bottom line is that 439 Court Street is not an appropriate location for this type of business. There is a constant flow of young, underage, impressionable adolescents' presence in the area. The City of Binghamton does not need to assist in their exposure to this product. The local residents do not want the business in this area. The council should respect and strongly consider the concerns of the tax-paying residents of the local neighborhood. Please consider this as a no.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Bill Bird from Robinson Street in Binghamton. I think one thing we should do is have a public hearing to improve the acoustics in here. Terrible. First of all, thank you all for serving on the planet. Your time, much appreciated. One of the things that the gentleman indicated about raising the fence, I think we're talking about the quality of life. And I think it's a C3 district, correct, on Court Street? Is that correct, Commercial 3? And it's bordering an R1.
C1, but.
And I walked from the border of what was known as ANW to the first house on Riverside. And it's 14 feet. And I think as you look around, and I know we have one representative from the east side and everyone else is from other than the east side. You think you have to ask yourself, if this was in your neighborhood and you got the decision to make yea or nay based on the sale of cannabis within two-and-a-half football fields of an elementary school, whether it be Horace Mann, Wilson, Calvin Coolidge, MacArthur, what would your vote be? I know the gentleman said there's no sight line. Well, in my mind, that's insignificant. Because what you need to worry about, and I think we've forgotten a lot of it, is the youth of the city. And I'm not putting any disparity on those that need cannabis for the correct reason. But those who use it for the incorrect reason, just think how simple it would be to drive, and I still think it's a ludicrous idea of a drive-up cannabis location, but that's what it is. Think how easy it would be for someone with the wrong intention just to drive up to the playground of Calvin Coolidge and let your minds wander from there. And being on a planning commission or other, it's never easy. You make the decisions based on what you feel is right. But I would like to ask you if, again, if this was in your district, in your neighborhood, what would your vote be? Thank you, Nick.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
Hello. I'm Don Hatson, 5 Riverside Street. And Marlene Hatson, Riverside Street. And initially, when the building opened, there was a problem with us with the lighting on the building and and, you know, I would, it was a problem even when they tried to correct it with the shorter lamp holes and all that, but I just wondered if there was any way possible that they could put a baffle between, on our side of the lamp pole and extend it down just enough so that we can continue using our scope at night. We had put money into a fairly decent-sized telescope and we don't want to lose that opportunity. And as far as everything else, I can't contest any of that. You've made some concessions. I'm happy with that. And, but that's about all I have, would be to do something, maybe improve on the lighting so it doesn't reflect into our backyard.
Okay.
Okay. I did my homework and I hope everybody else did too. I have a list of every cannabis place in Broome County, right up to Bainbridge. The hours of the Court Street one, it's totally different what the man said, the hours that he said. The Court Street is Monday through Wednesday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 AM. 8:00 PM. Thursday's 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Friday is 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Saturday is 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Sunday is 12:00 AM to 6:00. If anybody would like to see this, you're welcome to it. It's everyone that's in Broome County. Also, there is no drive-up anywhere. Any of these. There's one drive-up cannabis place in New York City, way up high somewhere. The other problem I have is the drive-up. And if you consider it not to have the drive-up, I would recommend highly to have a barricade. Entrance in and entrance out. Every night, if my husband and me don't see five cars or more sitting back there smoking, making out, drinking beer, throwing bottles, throwing rocks, all the time. It is approximately 15 feet from my building to the property line and it is 26 feet from my building to the drive-in window. I know it's going to be there because it is state-funded. We never had a problem with the ANW. They were there about a year. The problem that I've had after the ANW is with drugs. Broken windows, kids fooling around. Same thing in the back where the drive-up is. They had approximately four outdoor lights, security cameras on the corners of the building, which I heard the man say they were gonna put more in. I heard him say about the landscaping, when ANW did it with Mon John Dillon, when he was the owner of that, he told us that it would be grass, it would be bushes, never was. Big boulder rocks are there and kids pick them up, throw them in the road. Me, as a concerned citizen, I pick them up, throw them back. We mowed the grass that was there, we did the snow that was there. That's my most concern, is the drive-up and the hours. And out of all these cannabis places in Broome County, there is not a one that is past 10 o'clock at night. And I would also have the lighting fixture to not shine at our house. And when it was there before, it looked like the parking lot was an airport and our house was an airport. So I hope everybody makes the right decision for the community and for the children and for us as neighbors right up close. We've lived there for 35 years on the east side at that property. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
God bless you all.
Anybody else who would like to speak about the project?
Hello. Hi, good evening. My name's Jamie Mandel. I live on East Frederick Street on the east side of Binghamton. I do not have any issues with that being there. That's a very dark side of the street on Court Street. I do have a 19-year-old son that does work at McDonald's, that does walk home. There is, from it being a dark area over there, there's a lot, you do see different people that are using drugs. It's very dark over there. Me personally, I would like to see a business there. I don't have any issues with that being there. There is one on Broad Ave as well. Not really sure the exact hours. But if I'm not mistaken, it is open at least six days a week, I think. If I'm not mistaken, it's called Higher Standards. I want to say they did just recently change the name. Not sure if it's still Higher Standards. But me personally, I would feel comfortable with the place of business being there with hours, at least until the hours that they are looking to open it. And I do have a couple of people that weren't able to make it tonight due to work and their family. I have Kelly Anson. She agrees with that being there. I have Tim Bouts, Natalie Ely. I have um, Tim Bouts, Natalie Ely, um, Brooke Bouts, um, myself, Jamie Mandell. And then I do have Donovan White as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who would like to speak about the project?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Uh, it's Carrie Wenban, um, attorney with Coughlin and Gerhart, whose offices are ninety-nine Corporate Drive, Binghamton, New York. Um, appearing tonight on behalf of four thirty-nine Court Street, the owner of the property. I have one representative for the property which is here with me this evening and Mr. Dillon who is here well as well in the seating behind us. You know, as AOW has indicated, the, they've owned the property for a number of years. The city did um, opt in to allow the cannabis-related businesses within the city of Binghamton, the three different classifications, the industrial, the retail, and the on-premises consumption. And the city zoning map and districts did include um, are covered by this location at four thirty-nine Court Street, which is we know Court Street is a heavily commercial area. To do that, the, as indicated, you know, the C one district was approved for both the retail store and the on-premises consumption. As Ben expressed, the applicant is not seeking the on-premises consumption, only the retail sale only. The, as he cited, you know, the New York State education law does indicate that no proximity, they made that determination. You know, at the state level of the five hundred feet distance and on the same street, which looking at this was the fourteen hundred and he did previously speak to the sight line. Um, with respect to, you know, the owner has indicated, which they have confirmed and expressed this evening to address the concerns regarding the landscaping with the additional trees and sub shrubs, um, to install those as part of the two thousand fifteen plan, you know, contingent on approval. In addition to address the stone and the riprap in the areas in terms of, you know, pulling those up and replacing those with, you know, cedar sod in that area to provide grass. It's an alternate location. Um, the applicant, you know, has addressed the additional, you know, queuing the security system camera and the security on site. You know, in this area within a half mile of the school, including on Robinson Street, you do have a bar and tavern, you know, located on Robinson Street where the, you know, the students are walking through. In addition to, you know, the gas station, the bar and grill, and then the liquor store within the the Weiss, um, you know, complex there with the shopping center. And they do have up in the windows that are visible, including advertisements and signs for alcohol-related products, the tobacco, the vaping. Um, per the OCM and the Office of Cannabis Management, those logos and advertising are not permitted on these locations. It can be information displayed on outdoor signage related to the business only and the business information. And the, you know, frost glass would be provided, you know, in terms of, you know, looking in to this location from the area surrounding it. Um, you, in addition, you know, on Court Street has been mentioned, there's been an adult entertainment venue. So within the area within this commercial district and surrounding, there is a number of these uses that exist in this area. With respect to the property, it has created a significant hardship at this location. For the owners, they have owned it for a a number of years and it's indicated it's been six years now where the property has been vacant. And there has not been either a local tenant or a national tenant that has expressed any willingness to lease that location. It's due to the operating cost. Currently, the, you know, the property taxes are currently thirty-one thousand annually, you know, in addition to the insurance and maintenance and you know, carrying costs with the mortgage. And that's looking at, you know, roughly. The owner has advised for calendar year twenty-three, looking at that, you're gonna be by the end of the year approximately ninety thousand dollars. And it's every year and there's been six years with no tenant at that location. And again, you know, they have inquired and reached out to others with respect to any interest of leasing that location over these past six years. And there has not been an interest to doing that. There was some initial very interest in some local, like a liquor store operator or a smoke shop. And, you know, indicated that that's not a site that they would be looking to operate, you know, due to the expenses were too significant for them. And as it's continued to sit vacant, I think as we've talked here tonight, it lends it with no operating tenant in there. You know, no, they're offering a security guard and a security cameras vandalism that's taken place, you know, as there, and without someone being in there to occupy that space, that very well could can, you know, continue and continue with a hardship with this location. Um, you know, the tenant would be responsible for maintaining that property for the security cameras surveillance, the security um, personnel being onsite during those operating hours, maintaining the property in term of, you know, any, you know, garbage upkeep, you know, snow removal, the same as well as the, you know, lawn maintenance and others of these grassy areas and landscaping that would be installed. To do that. To go there. And it's been, you know, it's been a two, over the thirteen years that they've had it, it's been a two and a half million dollar investment that they've had in terms of improvements to the site, in addition to the operating expenses and carrying cost. Which again, is a significant hardship, you know, in the area for which is on this horizon has no viable options in terms of that that location. That to continue to be vacant. Um, and with respect to, you know, the drive-through, yes, A and, you know, there was a prior drive-through that was utilized there, which was reviewed in connection with that site. All right, in terms of that, you know, the drive-through was prior to the prior, you know, establishment that was located there. Um, AOW Construction has talked about the queuing, you know, the eight to nine vehicles in that location. OCM and the Office of Cannabis Management has provided in their regulations the, you know, the uh, ability to have a pickup window, you know, in connection with these retail locations throughout the state of New York. Do that.
Um, my name is Prabha Dillon. Um, when we first acquired, I know someone mentioning Preecees. Um, we bought that property from them originally. There was never an intention that we are not going to do something nicer with that property. Uh, with the floods, there were a couple of houses that went down. Uh, we bought those, uh, just though, at that point, we didn't even have any A and W lease, but we thought, okay, we can use that property to do something other than, no one was taking care of those houses. There were rodents with the flooding. With all those issues, we took upon the extra cost of adding those houses to our bucket list. Um, A and W came to, you know, with the franchise, we thought that it's going to go good with the numbers. And that's the reason for us to do all that investment, including all that extra drainage and whatever we had to spend on that. Um, and also on the lights, uh, the drive-through, whatever we could do to get it approved at the time um, from the residents. I mean, we did our best to get it done. Uh, we have listed that property over the years, advertised it, approached, uh, I can name ten uh, national franchises that food franchises that we have approached. Um, none of them wanted to be there. Pizza Hut did short summon trust. And then they kept the place, had us hold it for six months and then finally said that this is not something viable because of the the money. Uh, we did put this place on auction because we didn't have any other way to cope up with eighty thousand that plus that we are uh, losing every year. And even with that minimum, nobody approached and it didn't happen. Um, and I think there was also bank that we did get, you know, started some conversation with, that didn't work out. Uh, there were few people who approached us who wanted to do mom and pop, liquor store, smoke shop. But looking at the amount of, you know, expense, the rent, um, the property taxes, I they didn't move forward, just like Carrie said, just because the amount, it's only a national franchise. A food or something that's a big national who can afford to pay all those expenses, not a, not a, you know, mom and pop or a smaller owner can be successful. And I, we have been in this area, we are really invested in this area from last twenty-five years. Uh, we have multiple other businesses that are doing very well and we are committed to this area. So it's not about schools. I do have kids. And I know how important it is for the kids to be in an environment where, you know, you don't want half to those have negative things. But then I'm not sure how from a school, you can have bars, you can have uh, gas stations displaying their signs, can sell vape openly. There is no security guard there, there's no one to check ID. We just depend on this other person on the counter is looking at the ID. And and the kids can walk in, right? And I'm understanding from where we are doing this, the guard has to check the ID before someone can even enter. So I'm imagining there's not gonna kid open the door and walk in the store. It has to be an adult who is legally at the age who care, who is going to make that purchase, right? Um, the same thing with the drive-through. I am not, I don't think this place is where you have a menu and you can just come with your car and put an order in and in one minute, your order will be ready and you're picking up an order. So those are the things which are common since COVID. Uh, we can get our food, we can get liquor even on delivered to our houses. So I'm not sure how this is uh, drive-through situation is being seen as there will be line of cars and people will be picking up and ordering different stuff. It it just, to me, is the same thing as liquor and not having a consumption on the site. It's like you go to liquor store and you buy, right? So as a sensible adult, would you open the bottle in the store? Which I'm sure is not allowed, right? Can you go do it in the parking lot? Yes, of course, right? But I'm sure there are laws for that and we have local enforcement to watch and make sure that, you know, things don't happen like that, right? Where I do understand the neighbors saying about it, I've drove by that property several times in the evening. And I can see how, you know, it's dark at night, there are cars there. Can I go there and say and knock and say you do not belong here? I don't think so, right? But I think with them being on the property, the property will be live. There will be regular security on the side. They'll be maintaining the property. So it doesn't end up looking like other places which are on the right side going from this. And the whole other side is the railroad track. So I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, I took several uh, from the last um, meeting to this. Several trips just to see, okay, where am I missing something? Where am I seeing the school? I'm seeing kids walking around the neighborhood on that street because that's a commercial street. I I hope no one is allowing their kids who are in elementary to walk on that street anyway. I wouldn't do that. Um, I would really appreciate it if you look it through deeply that it's not just, you know, this is something that New York State has aligned. And again, they are not, they're not flashing lights saying, but light for sale, wait. It's all prostitute windows. Uh, I would respect whatever decisions you will take, but I would consider that, you know, uh, we do have our personal interest in this area. And we've been here and our heart and soul is in this area.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Manja Dillon. I live at forty-nine Coventry Lane, Binghamton, lived there for more than twenty years. So I'll make it quick, uh, or try not to, but we have vested two point five million dollars, uh, as of today into this property. Uh, there used to be three lots or four lots, pre-residential, one commercial. So thirteen years ago, this is when we started to do something about couple of dilapidated properties and two houses that were in good condition, but all the properties were more than a hundred years old. Espasos was present. We have seen all possible crimes that could possibly happen, has happened um, to our property, to our previous four properties. People stealing even the shingles. People, that these were the four old buildings. People breaking in. I I wouldn't say kids, but uh, my recent uh, pictures that were taken by our neighbor of breaking windows was a picture that was taken by a neighbor of kids breaking into uh, breaking the windows. That was just recently, a few months ago, and the picture was taken by the neighbors and uh, the police believe. And the neighbors believe those were young kids. So again, back to the history of it, thirteen years, we have seen all the crimes uh, take place on these properties. Including copper pipes, plumbing stolen, uh, cabinetry stolen. Uh, the four by four being taken apart. Um, burning it inside the building to keep warm. And nothing left of the buildings, the two good buildings that were there. All the costs that came out of our pocket, um, two point five million of it. And uh, we put a nice building there. We followed all the guidelines of the previous planning board. Um, installing a seventy thousand dollar, a water uh, reserve tank for excess wa- uh, water collection during rain, that is there. Uh, there is few things there, uh, that just makes this a project, it an expensive project. And again, eight foot, the eight-foot fence, um, there's a lot of things that went into this project that just made the cost of it, uh, for a regular business to operate there. All said and done, here we are. We have tried for six years, uh, to put somebody there. So um, the issues that are facing the property. Syringes being found by the maintenance person, uh, paraphernalia, drugs, garbage, trash. And all other issues that the neighbors are mentioning are happening because there's nobody there. It's weakened. It's for, everybody's taking, uh, it's dark. Uh, it's for, I I don't wanna say kids, but it's it's for there for somebody to throw a rock and break the windows. And again, we have seen a seven thousand dollar damage in just last six months. Neither I nor the insurance will keep coming up with money to repair these damages. We have people that br- again, in last six months that break in, use the bathroom facilities, there's no water connection there. So you can see what, what is that doing to the uh, occupancy inside. Soon we're gonna see people taking apart the building like it used to be twelve, thirteen years ago. Uh, we can't keep on fixing the damage. We can only hope somebody's there to take care of the building. And a, and an active tenant will do that. And I'm pretty sure they're also providing, my guess is about twenty jobs. And this is a clean business. This is better way of whoever needs that service rather than going to a corner or buying something. Somebody must have put a lot of thought into it to make it a legal business. Uh, everybody's gonna be paying taxes. So uh, that's, let me see if I have anything else to say, but that's pretty much where as a landlord, we're we're coming from. We have been with this property for thirteen years. We have taken something that has asbestos in it four buildings. We did it at our own ca- uh, own cost. We removed asbestos, we put new building. We took into concern that there was a flood. People called it a hundred-year flood. We elevated the building. And uh, an additional cost, my guess will be another four forty, fifty thousand dollars to elevate the uh, to increase the elevation for this lot. Um, we tried to met all the concerns that uh, the planning commission had. Um, during the operation of A and W or during just the opening of the A and W, we, the code enforcer was called in at least two, three times, um, because of the issue with the lighting. And every time he came in, there was no violations done and he did conduct a study. And uh, said there is nothing you can fix. You are under the guidelines and code. And you're following everything, or we've been ticketed, or we could have uh, been told to resolve that problem then and there. Uh, when the A and W was in operation for a year and a half. So according to code enforcer, who visited two, three times upon the neighbors, neighbors complaint about the about the um, um, the lighting, that that was not an issue uh, or that was not a violation according to the code enforcer. Um, again, um, we tried to do something good and uh, we're still standing by it uh, in that neighborhood. Uh, we have put our hard, hard earned money in there and we have stood behind it for thirteen years. Uh, but we can't keep up the building. Uh, we just had it uh, uh, parking lot sealed. Uh, that was a cost of four thousand dollars. So that, that will not be possible in the future if everything has fallen apart in last six years. Uh, we haven't gotten a tenant. Uh, the only tenants that are entrusted are uh, again, vapors, cigarettes, liquors. And we haven't had anybody like a bookstore, any other good business that we could think of that would approach us and say, we are ready to pay the cost of opening this business here.
Right. I, I think we've
Okay.
Thank you. I, I don't wanna cut you off, but I, we've got it.
It's concerning that, uh, you know.
Yeah, we understand.
Money and effort been in there and this could fall apart, that the building could fall apart, the lot could fall apart. And the, the problems the neighbors are facing uh, are are resolvable by having a business there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anybody else who would like to speak about the project?
Marlene Hatson again, five Riverside Street. I forgot to ask this very important question. If there's going to be a drive in, how do you know who is in the car getting the drugs? Do you know their age?
All right, we'll, we'll ask the, yeah, okay.
Why, that's what I was concerned about.
All right, we can.
Also, Mr. Dillon did not live next to it with the lights. The lights need to have, like my husband said, a baffle in front of them. So the lights are bright, but if a baffle is in front of them and I addressed it to Tito at the A and W also. If a baffle is in front of them, then it's not shining in my windows like an airport.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody new interested in speaking? All right, it looks like nobody else is coming to the microphone. Uh, Tito, do we get any other letters in between last meeting and this letter or meeting? All right, no letters, so we will close the public hearing. All right. This is your opportunity to respond to any comments that were made tonight.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm just gonna go down the list of notes I've taken from comments made. Uh, obviously, the school has been a topic multiple times. Um, like to point out the same thing that, you know, previous people have said. Uh, there is no marketing. There is no signage on the outside. There's no marketing. Um, you know, you will not know what this is other than the name of the business on the outside. There's no logo. It's literally just letters of the name of the business. Um, regarding the fact that uh, it was mentioned it's two and a half football fields away. That would be seven hundred and fifty feet. This is over fourteen hundred feet. Uh, I think the, you know, that was minimizing the distance that this is. This is, you know, considerably more. Uh, usage of cannabis, uh, going through the drive through and then bringing it to the school and distributing. I would think that would be highly unlikely considering the expense of the cannabis at these locations. Uh, they are not cheap. They're all um, you know, go through state testing. There's additional taxing on it, twelve percent tax on here. I would think if somebody personally, I would think this is my own hypothesis. If somebody's going to distribute cannabis at the school, it's not gonna be purchased from a retail location. It's going to be purchased somewhere else illegally. Uh, as for baffled on the side of the lamp pole. Uh, I believe what the residents are asking for is there's two light poles that, that are along the drive through side of the property that border the property just north of um, the drive through lane. Those two light poles are rectangular in shape. It would be, I, I pulled up some pictures. I took a look. We would be able to have um, a piece of bent metal made up uh, in a dark bronze color that would be similar to the head of the lamp. We could wrap it, you know, uh, six, eight inches onto each side and around the back, top riveted onto the existing fixture. That should give some relief, hang it down, you know, two, two and a half feet or so, get it closer to the fence line. I don't think that's an unreasonable request and it's something that, you know, we could make happen. Uh, another comment that was made was that no cannabis locations in the county are open past ten PM. We are not asking to be open past ten PM. That was something that was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, the latest hours would be as proposed, ten PM on Friday, uh, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. That would be the latest. Uh, there was a comment made about there being no problems when it was in A O W, A and W. Uh, of course, it's an active business. There's no less problems. When you have an active business, vacant spaces are a playground for havoc. Uh, you're going to get people congregating behind the, the building. Uh, once it's an active business, that will no longer be taking place. Uh, the checking IDs, uh, was mentioned about children potentially going into the store. No one under twenty one is allowed in. You go into the vestibule, the vestibule is secured, your ID is immediately checked. You have to be over twenty one years of age just to get into the sales area. Even if you entered the, the vestibule under twenty one, again, you can't see anything. The glass on the door into the sales area is frosted as well. So there's a, there's a you know, there's a vestibule that you could enter, but you'll immediately guess to leave if you're under twenty one. Uh, as for the drive through and how would you know how old people are? That would be the same way, you know, ID would be checked by the people coming through. If you check the ID, the ID has to be scanned. I don't, if anybody here has ever been to one of these places, um, your ID actually gets registered when you purchase uh, products. I believe that is everything that was brought up during the public hearing. You have any other questions that I missed from the, from the public?
I, I'm sure that what she's uh, she's referring to is the other people in the car, not just the driver. So will you be scanning, you know, obviously if I'm coming through and I've got somebody in the back that's my child or somebody that's younger. I mean, how does that?
That would not be required by law. You could have your whole family in the car sitting outside.
Yep.
You could walk inside, pick up your bag, walk outside. Same thing with liquor store.
Yeah, so I bet that's, yeah. I just wanna.
The purchase, the person purchasing the product has to be of legal age. Uh, once, what you do with that product, alcohol, tobacco, cannabis. If, you know, that's, that's on you. Yeah.
Yep. Uh, just on that note though, you know, there's no consumption within the store. Could you refresh us on consumption in the parking lot?
That has to do with your own city regulations. Are you allowed to smoke in public? Smoke a cigarette?
So if someone is consuming or smoking in the parking lot, that's, it would not.
That's the same as if you're smoking a cigarette on the street. At this point, if, if you're allowed to smoke outside a city hall here in a smoking area, you can smoke cannabis. Right? Anywhere you can smoke a cigarette, that's a New York state law now. Unless you guys have additional regulations. Anywhere you can smoke s- uh, cigarette, you can smoke cannabis.
The, the one thing I'll add to that is that you can't smoke and then drive. So if, if this is a driver in, in this scenario that, that went through the drive through, bought something and then smoked in the parking lot, they could be, they could be stopped by police for that.
All right. The only other question I have from the comments, uh, could you refresh us on how you exit the site?
Yep. There's two exits from the site. You can either exit onto Bigelow or you can exit out onto Court Street. Um, it would be the same exiting pattern as it was when it was A O W and A and W. Well, I don't know if it show it. So the only entrance into the you can see it here in the shot with the, this is the um, arrows on the actual parking lot. This is, this is Google Earth. This isn't, you know, a, a drawing. This is, so you have your entrance into the site from Court Street. That's the only entrance in. You're exiting, you can either come through the drive through and exit out onto Court Street or you can turn right and then exit out onto uh, I believe that's Riverside. Or, or that's Bigelow, sorry. Oh, Riverside's over here. Yep, sorry. Uh, exit onto Bigelow.
Got you.
So it would be an option. It wouldn't be, you know, one or the other.
All right. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Building on, building on this discussion about the entrance, yeah. Then not occupied. Parking lots get used for other not legal purposes and um, and creates atmosphere for trouble. Once this is, this is, um, if this proceeds at both entrances, would it be possible to put in a simple um, pivoting iron pipe gate? So when it closes at six o'clock on Sunday or ten o'clock on Saturday, someone could padlock that to keep people out to address that concern of the neighbors that people are using this to party and cause trouble. They would be fairly inexpensive if you use a pipe type um, pivot gate. I mean, that, that would cure whether it goes or not, the problem is with the parking lot off hours. So if it goes, then at least that would cure that thing that's not related to hot. This is a security for both the owners and the people in the neighborhood. Just a thought.
I can appreciate that comment. Um, I would then you know, mention, why isn't that at any other property? Why isn't that a Taco Bell? Why isn't that a Burger King? Why isn't that the tire shop down the road? Um, the fact that it's an operating business is what deters people from hanging out in there. Uh, there's security, there's cameras. You don't have people hanging out at Burger King when it's closed or Taco Bell or McDonald's because they have security. Uh, that's really the deterrent. The major deterrent for crime is the fact that there's cameras everywhere and they're visible. So I would I would tend to disagree that that is, is necessary. You know, once the business is active and, and open, that alone will deter people from just hanging out back there. Uh, cause nobody hung out back there when it was A and W. That's, that was, the residents even said that there was no problems when it was, when it was an active business.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Um, in the interest of moving things along, um, I'm gonna make a motion and we'll just see what happens. All right. So the uh, proposal involves a reuse of an existing building, which is a type two action. So no further environmental review was required. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met, which would be the equivalent of an approval, uh, conditioned on the following. That the areas that are currently stoned with riprap, uh, the stone is removed and sod and seed is installed to return it back to lawn. That all of the planting shown on the original planting plan dated three thirty one, two thousand fifteen is uh, installed uh, or maintained as originally approved. That the hours of operation are amended to Monday through Thursday, ten AM to nine PM, Friday and Saturday, ten AM to ten PM and Sunday, ten AM to six PM. That one additional camera is installed to cover the portion of the parking lot that's not covered in the graphic that's shown at this meeting tonight. I guess that would be the west end of the site, the parking lot on the west end of the site. And that the applicant installs baffles on the lights that would affect the neighbor directly to the north uh, in the manner that he described at today's meeting. All right. All right. There's a second by Chris, all in favor. All right, that's four in favor, all opposed. That's three opposed. Tito, what do we have? All right, that is an approval of the project.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, on to our next public hearing for tonight. The next public hearing is for the applicant C S D Housing LLC. Project address is two hundred Court Street, thirty two Fayette Street, thirty eight Fayette Street, thirty four Stuvessent Street and twenty five Rutherford Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of a vacant industrial building into a mixed use multi-unit dwelling with one hundred and ten units and social services facility, including the construction of an addition onto the rear of an existing building and the resurfacing of parking areas in the C one service commercial district and R three multi-unit dwelling district. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Sean C. Malloy. I'm with Pastor Associates here, representing our client, Helio Health and C S D Housing. Um, address is two four two West Main Street, Rochester, New York. Uh, Whitney with C S D Housing, uh, wanted to participate via Zoom, but I was informed that he's having an issue logging on. I don't know if other people are as well, but just, just so you're aware of that.
Okay. Yeah, I think at this point Zoom is just for listening in.
Yeah, well, he, he wanted to listen.
Oh, I got you.
I'm just saying, he had trouble um, connecting. The, the link wasn't working for whatever reason.
All right.
But.
Is that gonna be okay or do you need, need us to figure that out?
Um, it's gonna be okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll move forward.
All right.
It's, it's a pleasure to uh, uh, address the board. I appreciate your time. Uh, I know you guys are well past the schedule that you were uh, hoping for or planning on. So I, I will keep this brief, but willing to take any questions that you have. So most of the uh, background of the project was mentioned, uh, it was already um, given to you, but this is uh, currently a vacant building that was a um, shelter workshop for the disabled. Um, and this project is a twenty five million dollar project to uh, renovate the building and convert it to uh, affordable and supportive housing. So the, the building was, I believe the first part of the building was built in the nineteen forties and was added on to and, and renovated clear up through the nineteen eighties. And as such, is considered a historic building. So we've been working with the, with SHPO and with the National Park Service to maintain um, the character of the building and make it a, a functional aesthetically pleasing um, building. And as was just seen in this last uh, uh, public hearing, you know, it's, it's not good for the community to have vacant properties. Uh, they, those bring with it all sorts of issues. So this will um, improve the neighborhood. It will I'm assuming improve the attack space, uh, but all around it'll be a good uh, the project for the community. There will be um, a hundred and ten or a hundred and eleven housing units in there that will be a mixture of studio apartments, one bedroom and two bedroom apartments. Um, this project came before the board, I believe almost two years ago and was approved. But the reason we're coming back is because due to um, space constraints and trying to meet code and, and make it a, a usable space. There was a, um, a reduction in parking spaces. Originally it was uh, in the early uh, phases. In the early uh phases, we were, we thought we could fit in a hundred and ten spaces. When everything was taken into account, we're now down to ninety one. I know on the paperwork. Uh, it said eighty eight. I think the difference is there are three spaces. I'm not sure if those were counted in, so whether it's, so that's why our number says ninety one. I believe that, that's why your number says eighty eight. But the, this type of housing typically has fifty percent or less. People who drive their own vehicles. A lot of them are, you know. Brought by shuttle or by relatives or, or driven by someone else. But we don't anticipate that the residents will need more than about fifty five spaces, probably less. Which would still leave over, you know, about thirty six spaces for use for staff, visitors and, and other people that need to come. So uh, other minor changes was, you know, removed a little bit of sidewalk to make things fit. Due to NISX requirements for um. Uh, a ground mounted uh transformer and different things like that. A little bit of a different configuration in the parking, which is part of the reason why there was a reduction. Also due to the nature of the occupants and during the state um HSA review. They asked that we increase some of the handicap spaces available. Um, so that's why, that's how we got to where we are now. And I, I'd be happy to answer any questions or.
Chris?
First question actually directed to Tito. So previously approved for one ten. Asking for a waiver now down to eighty eight, maybe ninety one, depending on the three mystery slots. What are they required to if we don't approve a parking waiver?
A hundred and ten spaces.
Waiver to get down.
Correct. And I have a quick, we, we didn't count them and that's my mistake because I thought they were stacked. In that driveway, which would not count. If they obstructed driveway, they don't count as parking spaces, but I see now there are parallel spaces on the side. Do you know how wide the, the driveway is there if you subtract the, the parking spaces?
So you still have an eleven foot lane beyond the parking space.
Okay, so they count, so that, that makes it ninety one spaces being provided.
And the. Um, the nature of the potential residents. And the only half of them. In your estimation, based on whatever studies and homework you've done, will probably have cars of their own. Do we have a number of the potential staffing in the building on site during. Heavy weekday hours, you know, and they've got. Full staffing, not like the graveyard shift at two AM on Saturday, but. How many staff have we gotta make sure we got parking for?
So I don't have that answer. Um, not to make excuses, I'm the site guy and a lot of that stuff is um handled by other people, so I, I. I could throw out theories and stuff, but I really don't know.
So just out of curiosity, the, the other alternative is to get a variance. But you've gone this direction. A- any reason for, instead of going for a variance, asking for the waiver or just this seemed easier?
So, um. Part of the reason is timing.
Yeah.
And funding of the project.
Gotcha.
And they, so they've already uh applied for. Uh, building permits and, and I'm not sure if those have been granted yet or not, but we were told they could move forward with that. But it is, it does have to do with timing and state um funding.
Gotcha.
And those issues.
Okay, just curious.
What happens if we don't give you the waiver?
That's a good question and that's one I would pose. To you and to the building department, because you know, this was, site wise, this was approved and we recognize that there was a change. Um, and it's not, it's no longer exactly what was approved, but the building itself is what was approved, so there were no changes there. So I guess I would pose that question uh to this board. If, if you do not desire to give that waiver. Um, what would the requirements be?
So, I, I can answer. They, they'd have to, they'd have to come up with parking somewhere else, um, additional.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to hint at is like, if. You're just the site guy. I understand that. I, is, uh, your four hundred other bosses have the food chain, are they prepared? Like, uh, does this mean if we don't grant them the thirty. Parking spot waiver that the whole project collapses and they gotta give back all their checks to various state and federal agencies because they won't move forward?
And that's, that's one I'm, again, I'm not qualified to answer. I, I don't know that. I don't know if anyone really knows that answer. I mean, is that something that involves um. Banks and the state and the owner and, and a lot of different decisions that way. So I, I, sorry, I can't answer that.
All right, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna weigh in on, uh, just my personal view on this, just to keep things moving. Uh, this building has been empty or uh a problem for so long that. He could ask for a waiver from me. He could ask for a waiver for every single parking space and I'd be like, absolutely. I normally know, like, we would really wanna work on that, but this building, it's so huge, it's so weirdly configured. That the fact that somebody is willing to do something with it, I, I'm absolutely for me, so I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
I was gonna weigh in on that from a different perspective, but Chris brings up a good point and, but in that neighborhood itself. There's other areas, um, this. Back towards uh Saint Mary's and the uh where the Columbus school site is, that they're very close, that might be something there. Or near the baseball stadium, uh, because games probably won't coincide with. Like work, like Chris was saying, staff, um, workers that. So I think that area, more than maybe the west side area where there's student housing concerns. Might be more amenable to temporary arrangements for those extra spaces, just by the nature of that neighborhood.
Where street parking is also available in a lot of locations around there, so.
And, and I do want to emphasize that. Due to the nature of the building, we don't anticipate there really being any issues with parking. There should be more than enough available for this type of use.
All right.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
All right, any other? Questions, comments?
Tito. Just wanna make one comment that I, I did make in the staff report, but the applicant did acquire. Four additional parcels beyond the parcel that the building is on to provide parking. Um, so they've made an effort to provide as much parking uh as they could, so I just, I just wanna point that out. They're, they're not asking for a complete waiver. Um, and they have, you know, taken steps to, to provide that parking. And then the last thing that I'll add is that. We know uh in the planning department that one of the biggest barriers to the. Provision of affordable housing is actually parking requirements because it, it drives the cost up so much to acquire land. To pave land, et cetera. Um, and so this being an affordable housing development. Uh, I think my personal opinion, professional opinion, sorry. Um, representing the planning department is that this would be an appropriate time to, to grant a waiver of parking.
And there is, um, and I should have mentioned this, public transportation uh nearby. There, there is. Uh, access to public transportation as well.
All right. All right, well, let's do this, uh, I don't think you're gonna need to move, but we do have to open a public hearing and just see if there's anybody here to, to speak. About the project. So, all right, so this is the public hearing for CSD Housing LLC. Project address is two hundred Court Street, thirty two Fayette Street, thirty eight Fayette Street, thirty four Stuvessent Street and twenty five Rutherford Street. If there's anyone here who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. And Tito, we didn't uh receive any letters about this project, right? No. Okay. All right, seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. All right, I'm gonna make a motion and a couple of motions. So we're doing everything in one meeting because this is a um. Request for a waiver and we've already approved this one time. So I'll make a motion that the planning commission should act as lead agency. For seeker review and that this is a unlisted action under seeker. All right, second by Steve, all in favor? All right, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the, for a negative declaration for seeker review based on the following. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Uh, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkways? Uh, no or small impact? Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available? Energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact? Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Uh, no or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No or small impact? And will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Uh, no or small impact? So based on all of those, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. And finally, I'll make. A motion to grant a waiver. Let's just round it up or down to, for twenty parking spaces. Yep, a motion for a waiver of twenty parking spaces for the project. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, all opposed? All right, six in favor, one opposed. All right, and I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Second by Kelly, we're gonna go all the way through Kelly. Uh, all those in favor? All right, six in favor, all opposed, or one opposed. All right, it's approved.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, last item of business. Uh, that concluded public hearings. So the last item on our agenda is approval extension for the construction of a mixed use building. With sixty five dwelling units and forty three hundred square feet of commercial space and two ancillary parking area, areas. At one sixty two, one eighty, one eighty four, one eighty six Henry Street and seventy seven Pine Street.
So this was approved last, last fall, uh. It just expired, the approval just expired and the applicant is still working with state agencies to, to wrap up the funding. And so they're asking for another year. There are no changes to the, to what was approved.
All right, anybody opposed to a twelve month extension, one year extension? All right, I'll make a motion. To approve a one year extension of the approval, private, previous approval. All right, second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, any other business anybody wants to talk about? Joe?
Thought on, we had the first discussion on. Cannabis drive up. And how many, has there been a lot of applications throughout the city for? Cannabis locations? In other words, like from a planning perspective, a very high level perspective, is there? Is there enough population to support all these places?
So the state, there, oh. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all.
Uh, there are only, there's only, there are only two in, in the city right now that are legal, that have licenses.
Okay.
One uh is on Court Street, the other is delivery only and that's based on Clinton Street.
Okay.
Um, so this would be the third and they're really limiting, I think, how many licenses they give out per region.
Okay.
Um. The one that was mentioned on the record here, that's illegal, that's not supposed to be there. So we do have others that, that are not legal that we're working on. And we're actually meeting with state representatives tomorrow to talk about the best way to enforce that, but. Um, they're really, they're on, there would only be three in the city.
Thank you. That's, that's, I was wondering what the saturation is. I'll tell you about that now.
I think for the, for the initial round of, of the, the card licenses, they were calling them, I think they were considering saturation in a region. Now at this point that they're opening them up to regular licenses, um, it's probably just based on municipality and, and. Um, and it's gonna be constrained by schools and, and places of worship and stuff like that.
All right. Anything else?
Oh. Um, it, yeah, it's the first, the first Tuesday in January. It's a second, unfortunately.
We're all gonna be in rough shape that day. All right. Motion to adjourn. All right, by Kelly. Second by Steve, all in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right.